I want you to score thirty on driving.
Hey Susan.
Hi there.
I haven't let anybody in yet because I was waiting.
Okay.
Uh, we're up on YouTube Live.
I'm sorry?
We are up on YouTube.
Oh, fantastic. Then I don't have to do anything.
So you let me know if you want me to do anything or just hang out and.
I'm, I'm just gonna let you run the whole thing then, cuz I've gotta leave at noon for my doctor's appointment.
Sounds good.
So, um, you know, the, you know, the schedule.
Yep, O H E from twelve to twelve thirty, and then is that a real lunch break or?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, but I leave the YouTube up and running during that.
You do.
Okay, um, do I need to put in recess or anything on the Zoom?
Uh, I would.
Okay.
I just let Tom Del Nicky in.
Okay, hi Rep Del Nicky.
All right, I'm gonna leave then.
Sounds good.
All right, have a great weekend.
You too, bye bye.
Bye.
Okay, I think I'm in the right area. Am I on?
We can hear you.
Yes, you are.
I have like three separate screens on my desk right now, so.
You're good, Tim.
Okay. Good.
How's everyone doing today?
Good.
Oh, Yukon.
How are you?
Excellent.
Some sleepy folks this morning, that game ended at what, twelve thirty?
Something like that.
Yeah.
I blame the Paul.
Yes. Could be another late one tonight depending on the St. John's game before you can.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't know that I've ever been to an appropriations workshop meeting. So I'm unclear as to the protocol, are you waiting for Senator Austin and?
So we're just gonna wait um for another minute and then um I'll defer to Representative Haddad as to when he's ready to go and wants to get it started, and we'll see whoever joins us.
Okay. And just one more question, I guess.
Sure.
We had some, we, in our initial appropriations meeting, we had some, we were asked to provide answers from questions, and I believe that we have. Noel's been pretty um on top of all of this is that, and so is that going to be the center of the discussion today, I guess?
Question I can't answer, um, that's gonna be up to the, the representatives and the legislators on the session.
Um, I think we're, we also anticipate having um Representative Walker and perhaps Senator Austin joining us this morning, I was just gonna see if they were gonna jump in. Usually, usually there's some time provided to sort of go through the answers to the questions and then um, you, you're only scheduled for thirty minutes and so that hopefully we can get move through that quickly with a little bit of extra time at the end to address some other issues that um.
If you give me one second, let me just check on the status.
We, we have my entire staff on. I mean, the directors and um the division director in, in uh Finance that handles both the student loan reimbursement program and the Roberta Willis program, which seemed to be the highlight of the, the questions and answers, so.
Hey, everyone, we have Representative Walker joining us.
Okay, all right, good afternoon, everybody, uh, good to see you all, and it's a wonderful day, it's a full moon, and it's the end of the week and all the other good things in there, so. Mercury retrograde, you, we can get into some more details if you want now or a little later with our astrology at the end of the, of the day, okay? Thank you very much for, for joining, and I would like to turn it over to Office of Higher Education. Good afternoon, Mr. Larson.
Uh, good afternoon, Representative Walker and your esteemed committee, I see a whole host of old friends and folks that I served and I'm delighted to uh answer questions today.
Just let you, I just wanna let you know and everybody cuz all, most, all of our members are on at least two Zooms today, and so Greg's out in the, out in the woods somewhere, I don't wanna know Greg, don't wanna know, and so, I mean, it's um, we're juggling as much as we can, so I just wanna uh let you know, we assure you that we are all listening and we're, we're monitoring and read the materials, but uh, we've got to move on because we're coming close to our deadline, so thank you very much. Good afternoon, Greg, you wanna, do you, do you want me to continue or do you uh?
I, I can do whatever works best for you, uh, but this is, this is what backyards look like in Mansfield, uh, totally. Not, I'm not any, not any place extravagant.
It loo, it loo, it looks just like my backyard, okay? A bunch of trees with no leaves, all right, go right ahead, Greg, go ahead, go right.
I mean, I, I was gonna give the, the office a, a chance to sort of just walk us through quickly the responses, just to see if um anybody had any follow-up questions regarding the responses that they had, that they provided, they are provided in writing, and so I, you know, I, I, you know, I don't, I don't feel like you need to um, you, you know, say everything that's on the page, but um, in particular, I think there were a lot of questions, as you said, Tim, about the student loan reimbursement program and subsequently the Willis program, and so I think if we focused primarily on those two programs, probably get some real headway.
So i- in the interest of your time, um, let's, let's focus on those, those three items, the, based on the questions that were asked prior, so I think we can start with the student loan reimbursement program, um. We did provide uh sort of a status as of uh late last week on the um on sort of a summary sheet, if you will, Mike, I'd ask you if you could just walk people through. Um, the questions were uh along the lines of the application period, application status, you know, how much, how many, you know, and then where some of sort of the deficiencies may have been in our processing, I think uh by and large, uh, we've done a really very good job with standing this program up, and it's been very well received, and if all things uh come to fruition, I think we will be very close to the full issuance of that six million dollars that you guys have appropriated for it. And so um you know, we're excited that and, and, but like every other program, and the reason for these working groups is to sort of talk about these things and see how we can uh tweak to make them better, so Mike, let me turn it over to you, and if you could walk through those statistics for folks, and then maybe at the end of that, if they have questions, and then we could uh move on to the Roberta Willis, and then of course, the National Services piece.
My.
Absol- absolutely, Mr. Commissioner, I appreciate that, good early afternoon, everyone. Um, I took the liberty uh to run the numbers uh this morning for SLURP and um uh during our hearing, I, I believe we're at two hundred and one pending eligible applicants, and today we sit at three hundred and thirty pending eligible applicants, which means that they are deemed to be eligible and their application and their um document, documents submitted for um eligibility have been accepted, um, which is great news, and um if, if they are all awarded today, we would, we would disperse eight hundred and thirty seven thousand, three hundred and four dollars. Um, we have a total of one thousand five hundred and ninety-nine applications in, and we take away our three thirty, we remain with one thousand two hundred and sixty-nine. And based on an average award of two thousand five hundred and thirty-seven for those three hundred and thirty that have been awarded. Um, if those twelve sixty-nine, we're looking at over four million dollars in awards, if those applicants um turn out to be um eligible upon uh review. Um, we are, our team is working diligently, we have the uh three-part uh part-time staffers that are processing and um reviewing the applications. And they are reaching out to applicants if they have information that's incorrect. Um, just yesterday, we sent out um a batch of emails uh to, to applicants who just have missing, a missing form, the volunteer form seems to be the one that's holding um our applicants up the most. Um, and as well as it's a verification of payments, and that's just stemmed from their loan providers uh not being able to furnish appropriate documents. Uh, they're meaning that they didn't have a name or an account number associated with their student loan, so it made it impossible for us to verify um, that they actually belong to that applicant, uh, we're working with them um diligently on that, and the other piece is um like I said, the volunteer hours and working with the Department of Consumer Protection to make sure that those organizations, nonprofits are appearing, and they have credential numbers or license numbers so we can move those um towards the uh eligible pile.
Um, can I ask a question, um, Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? Um, I, I was look, reading the notes on that, the average award on, as of February nineteenth was one thousand six hundred and twenty-seven, and you just gave a different number uh, two thousand something, can you explain to me why the, the, like the dramatic change, difference, I mean, it's over five hundred?
Absolutely, Representative, um, so at that time, when we received, the, the count for the awards is based on how many payments and the amount of payments that were made towards a student loan in two thousand and twenty-four. So at that time, our average for the eligible pending applicants was lower, now that we've gone from two hundred and one to three hundred and thirty, we're now experiencing um applicants who have made higher payments in two thousand and twenty-four, which raised our average.
Okay, okay, all right, I, I, I was, I, I couldn't, I didn't quite understand that, okay, um and the, there was one other stat that you just gave us, um, the number that you received as of today is how many?
We have one thousand five hundred and ninety-nine applications in. Uh, and within that number is the three hundred and thirty that are pending eligible, and then we have another one thousand two hundred and sixty-nine that are still under review, or we are actively requesting additional information or corrections to information that was submitted.
And they, and, and with all of those, you said, you gave a total of how much you expect to expend because of the ones that you have in front of us, how much was that?
And that number would be total of four million fifty-six thousand, seven fifty-seven, and that would be based on our current average reimbursement of two thousand five hundred thirty-seven.
And, and we can run this summary sheet today and provide it to the committee.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Cory? I'm sorry, Representative Harris.
Sorry, thank you. It's okay, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you, so I, I just wanted to once again commend you all for uh the rollout of the program, you know, this being first, it's kind in the nation, I think that we're setting a good standard, so thank you once again. Um, and, and I don't think it'll come as any, to, as a surprise to anyone here, that I obviously think that the money that you're putting out is really great, uh, for this to only have been in existence pretty much for two months. Uh, and I, of course, Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, will definitely push for us to put more money back into it um in the years to come, the thing that I thought was really interesting, and if you guys can I, I just wanna say what I thought was interesting first, and then also just touch on, I have a question. I thought it was really interesting regarding the disparities in representation amongst age, so we have a lot of the vast majority of people uh in their twenties and thirties applying, but we have a lot of people in their fifties and up to seventy-five applying for this program, so um I just wanna highlight that for the subcommittee. Um, but in addition to that, the institutional representation, Albertus Magnus has the highest application representation, um, and so is that for the institutions that have lower engagement, can you just indicate whether there's just a lack of awareness about the programs, or is there any, are there barriers um to access the, the program, and how do you think that you can address that moving forward if we were to able put that money back in for another biennium?
I think those are great questions, I think, you know, when we first took this on, I think we were all well aware that there's five hundred thousand um student loan borrowers in the state of Connecticut, and you know, I think a lot of us even felt internally like we're not even gonna have to advertise this, there's so many people that need so much money that this should just fall in place, and so we sort of ramped up for how do we, how do we process, so we're, you know, we're the processor of this, and we're gathering the information and so forth. We did take an initiative and spent about twenty-five thousand with uh Latino way and specifically targeted um uh communities along the lines of the, the bigger centers of where we are, and then we also took a another step and tried to go out on community access television cuz it's free, and it goes into a lot of communities that normally uh aren't served by larger markets, so uh to the extent that we maybe need to do a little broader uh appeal. Um, I believe we also reached out to, you know, we, we touched with all of the uh, the colleges cuz we're handing out Roberta Willis money and sort of like letting your students know that this is available, we even have a, a uh, we put a bulletin out on our AmeriCorps National Services platform, so I think the fact that it was new, the fact that it was a little cumbersome to sort of apply because of the nonprofit status and so forth, I think we've been able to work through that. So those, I think, some issues going forward that uh, once we have this fully captured, uh, we'll be able to, to sit with you and then put this on the table and, you know, collectively say, okay, maybe this is where we need to to focus more of the energy and so forth, but we are sort of the, you're, you're seeing the, the fruits of a, a system that has just been put up. Uh, I, I think it's a fair amount of, of marketing, frankly, and in the right audiences, we're able to genuinely, because of the information in the software system, figure out, A, where they're coming from, where they live, and, and uh some of the demographics stuff that we believe in. But some of that, I think, um, w- we, we could enhance, you know, um with some additional marketing uh material, and then, you know, cross-purposing colleges and other agencies and nonprofits.
Okay, um, a- and I appreciate that, uh, Mr. Larson, I, I tr- I totally appreciate that, I, I will say the other thing that I thought was really good is that there's a broad spectrum of people from all over the state applying for it, rural areas, suburban areas, so I think that that's really good. Um, the only thing, I do think we need to put more money into the, into marketing the program because from what I'm hearing from people is that this is probably the most accessible program that they're able to take advantage of, even more accessible than the SAVE program, which is about to go defunct on the federal level. Um, and I'm hearing from a lot, lot of parents, not as many uh young people, but more parents who are taking advantage of this either because of their debt or debt of their kids, so I just wanna throw that out there, um, thank you, Mr. Chair, I have more questions, but I can wait.
If, if. Representative Harris, if I could just continue that thought real quick.
Uh, we, we, sir, uh, we do have Roberta Willis, and we only got about fifteen or sixteen more minutes, so can we save that thought and go to the next question?
Yeah, I was gonna ask a, a Representative Dathan.
Yeah.
I can go offline with you, it's very simple, let's go to Roberta Willis.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, I'll say my question.
We're gonna do Representative Dathan's question first and.
No, 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 you can wait, and let's go through, cuz that's more material than, my question's not material, but I still didn't ask it in the last meeting, and I wanna ask it today.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry to jump in.
Okay, so then moving on, I guess we're, are we ready, we will move on for the sake of time to the Roberta Willis Scholarship Program, and there's a couple of um issues that we're trying to work out, right, one is, there were a lot of follow-up questions uh that you responded to around the timing and where we are in terms of uh providing s- uh resources that enable you to correct the, or, or to change the timing of the awards. Um, uh, thank you for the information that you provided, um, and then there's this additional question that we wanna, I'm sure people have followed questions on around uh the, the administering the program this year. Did you want us, let, let's start just with the timing issue if I could, um, and just, I think we made fifteen million dollars available, I think that you used uh, that fifteen million dollars to sort of make to, to advance the timing of Need Merit Awards. Um, did you just wanna, I guess, Ram, you might be the best person to answer this, right?
If I could just quickly frame it, and then I'll let Ram sort of explain this, so uh, the Need Merit and the Need are effectively, we get a, a allocation from the, from the uh, a general fund allocation. And we. And we purposely take $10 million of the combination of both of those, the Need Merit and the Need, and park $10 million for the Need Merit portion of that. One is a grant, the other is a scholarship. And then, once we have the applications filled in the Need Merit side of that with that $10 million, we then use the residual for the Need. And although we reserve $10 million, we don't necessarily always get $10 million worth of applicants. And there's a significant amount of fluidity between someone going to the college, awarding that money and that individual actually showing up at the college in the merit section of that. So if they've awarded that money and that student doesn't necessarily end up at that college, we have a little bit of a cushion and then we would take the balance of the unallocated Need Merit money and funnel that into the Need portion of that. Okay? So Ron, I think it's, it's a little difficult to explain sometimes because it's one pot and two programs. And sometimes it gets crockery. But I think it's important for the committee to know that statutorily our maximum amount is 10 million. So we take that 10 million and put it into the Need Merit portion of it and start to work with that. And there's a back and forth with the universities and colleges and the applicants. And then similarly, uh, with the, with the merit portion of it. Ron, I'll turn it back to you or Mike if you can then talk about the timing. And I think in our response, there was a written response as dates, times and money as it comes in and out and forward. And, and it really is, you know, a fluid situation and timing. And I will also say that with regards to the ARPA funds, you know, we had some ARPA money that was, was really good. So we were able to put that out. But the ARPA money had some variations of the theme. There was, there were some regulations of giving ARPA money out that weren't exactly the regulations of the state statute. So there's, there was some, you know, there's some working with that. It's all good. It's all sort of headed in the right direction. But those were some of the, um, the speed bumps that we would hit accordingly. So Ron, I'll turn it back to you in the interest of time.
Thank you, Commissioner. So with regards to the, the timing, uh, we established the actual need-based budget back in June of, of last year. And we noticed the schools of what their balances were going to be. Now, as we were coming through this year, we have, we have a $15 million carry forward that we need to be able to use for Need Merit. This year, we were able to notice those students in February. So those students already know what they would be entitled to. When we were looking at those balances, we realized that we had, um, over $15 million. As, so this, that had never, since this is a new process, you know, we had to be able to release additional dollars to those students. When we were looking at the balance, what ended up happening is that we mistakenly included the Need Merit Funds Reserve for the current students for 24, 25. And as a result, additional dollars went out. Now, the good news about that is that the additional dollars that potentially were, were going to go out, it was, the first number was 6.7. But since we, we hit the, we went over, the reality situation is that 6.7 million dollars did not go out. Initially, um, what, what actually went out was about 4.5 million dollars. Since then, we've actually recouped, um, dollars from institutions. And we're currently, um, right now, the, the overage is about 1.1 million dollars. Our expectation is that we'll continue to recoup some of those dollars, understanding that we want to make sure that the students are kept hold and the institutions are kept hold. So as of right now, um, the worst case scenario is 1.1 million dollars, um, of an overage, which could be addressed by using the current, um, $15 million that is being held in reserve. But our hope is that we won't even have to touch the $15 million when it's all said and done.
But I, I think the question has always been the timing of it. And I thought we were, uh, we were trying to establish, I'll say for the lack of a better word, an escrow account. So that we have some going forward money that would effectively be parked and available before. Because we get the budget done in June, we don't know how much money we have in June. And college kids need to know earlier. And so we tried to, you know, get some additional funds and sort of escrow them and see if we could handle it that way. And then I think we sort of conquered that, but at the same time, the, a little bit of confusion with ARPA, and I mean, I'm saying confusion because I still think this is all good news. I mean, people are still getting scholarship money. They're still getting awarded. The timeliness of it, I think, is consistent with when the state budget is closed and when the allocation needs to hit the colleges so that they can make an informed decision on where they need to go. And I think, I don't know that we have necessarily perfected that. Is that a fair assessment? You're muted.
I'm muted. I, I mean, I ask, yeah, Representative Walker, I believe that to ask her a question, but I, but I want to make a comment first. There, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts to this program. And as a consequence, there's a lot of moving parts to your response. And I, and I'm not quite following the bouncing ball yet. First, you know, the $15 million is intended to sort of get, you know, I thought at the time, the entire program ahead of cycle, not just the Need Merit portion. Now, you might respond to that by saying that that is just, it wasn't going to work. There's not enough money. I, I think somebody was trying to give you a, you know, a whole allocation, a half a year ahead as opposed to a whole allocation, a whole year ahead. If that makes sense. And, and that you decided that you would prioritize the Need Merit Scholarship Awards. You know, I don't actually take issue with that. I think the Need Merit Scholarship Awards get awarded directly to students. Uh, and that makes sense. But then you didn't have enough to, to notify schools with certainty of what their allocations would be, be a whole year ahead of time because you only had the leftover, uh, $5 million plus whatever you, uh, was being unused or identified as unused in the Need Merit Scholarship, right? So, so one question I, I have, I mean, I, I don't think we're going to get to this by in the next six minutes. One question is how much do you need to solve the timing issue? And then separately, I, I understand that there's a lot of funds coming at you. There's a lot of different pots of money that were offered. Um, and apparently a mistake was made and you over-allocated those resources. We thought it was 6.7. Now you're saying 4.5, maybe as little as 1.1. I, I'm confused at how the number is rapidly diminishing and maybe you could just tell me that. And, and, and is it, and I guess, I, I don't know. You, you said you're going to use the $15 million that we've given you to solve the funding cycle issue to partly cover the, the overages. I guess I wonder if that's going to leave us further behind in solving the funding cycle issue next year or not. I'm trying to sort of piece all this together and it's challenging right now for me.
So with regards to addressing the, the first portion from the 6.7 to the, the 4.5, when, when we're processing monies to pay out, if there is no, if the, you know, once you get to the balance of zero, no additional dollars go out. So as a result, when we went to process that 6.7, monies went out up until we reached the balance of zero. So as a result, 6.7 million dollars did, never went out. Um, so.
So Representative Hadad, I, I think we, we did provide you with sort of a written timeline. Because I think we're, we're talking about two separate issues in this conversation. One was, was a current mistake that we had last week where we effectively mistakenly issued out of, out of a wrong, we, we issued Need Merit out of a Need situation. We've, we've remedied that situation. Your, your call has been, how much money do we need to park ahead of the state budget? So when we get requests for funds from students and colleges, we can, we can honor that in an expeditious fashion. So I'm gonna, in the interest of time, we've given you an explanation on how we disperse the money. It may be, maybe what we should do is put the actual allocations into this diagram and resend it to you. So you can sort of, because when you, when you don't see the timing on a calendar and you just talk about money and it, it does get very confusing. We've often said, you know, the Need Merit, the Roberta Willis Need Merit and the Roberta Willis Need are just genuinely confusing to people anyways. And, you know, we should try to sort of rename them either just Merit and Need and go forward. But I think it may be beneficial if we put the allocation dollars into this example that we provided to the committee.
Yeah, and my exit question, I guess, for you.
Am I right with that, Representative?
I'm sorry, let me just ask my exit question to you and, and you can respond to this. It's like, I need to know how, how much this mistake will cost us in next year's sort of allocation to sort of get you ahead of the cycles, if anything. Um, and, and you can answer, I mean, you can answer now if it's brief. But I'm gonna ask Representative Walker to ask her a question first so that we can get questions in, even if you have to follow up afterwards. Representative Walker?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. And quite honestly, I was sort of going in the same direction that, that you were going. Um, and I'm still trying to get from 6.7 to 4.5 to 1. Those numbers don't, don't, don't exactly work for me. But the, first and foremost, the communication that was out to the colleges that we made, the governor's office said, we could not claw back. We could only if the money was not obligated. So you're saying to us now that the, the money that went out, suppose of the 6.7, of that money that went out, you only have 1 million left of that. The rest of it was already obligated or am I confused or are they on the other end? So I'm trying to understand that, Ron.
It's, yeah, it's the inverse. So we were able to get those dollars back from the schools ultimately of the obligated. For us, it would be like 1.1 million dollars.
So of the 6.7, only one point, what did you say? 1.1 was obligated?
1.1 million dollars would be the obligation for us, correct?
Okay.
And then, and then what we've done is, I mean, we can actually provide a chart and actually walk, walk us through if it's, that's beneficial for you to be able to see, you know, what, what occurred, what have we done? And it's all in a nice spreadsheet, you know, so that everyone can easily understand.
And I'm, I'm, I want to join the course with, with Representative Hadad. I was under the same impression that when we did this, that this was going to get us current. So that our schools, the main purpose was this, with this was to make it available so that our students are not the losers by the fact that we can't figure out where the pots are. We put this 15 minute, and I, I didn't look at it as an escrow. It was not an escrow. This was, um, six months earlier. That was what the purpose was, six months earlier so that those kids would get those monies that were obligated to them in, in their, the distribution. And so, um, the, it's really confusing. And I, I don't know how, we've got to figure this out and figure it out quickly. Because again, students should be getting their payments now. I, and the other question I was going to ask, don't give it to me now, please. But I'd like to know, how are the dollars dispersed to the students once they have achieved the status of a recipient, whether it be Need Merit or Need? Or whatever category, if there's another category. But I, I want to know, when do they find out? And when does the first payment go out? And how many payments go out? Because I understand there are multiple. It's not, they don't get the whole thing upfront. They get in portions. Don't give it to me now, sir, please, because we don't have the time. But I want that ASAP because I think we've been trying to figure that out and multiple legislators have kind of asked me that same question. So I, I really need to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative Walker. Representative Nathan?
I'm going to echo those comments. We've had so many discussions and I'm feeling the frustration as well. Just to add to the list for next, I don't know if we're having another meeting or if you're just sending additional information. It sounds like we need to have another meeting, in my opinion, but I'm not the chair. I would like to have some more information about the adjunct professor grant program regarding healthcare. I hear from my, um, people who are adjunct professors that, you know, they need to get this, the, the sort of healthcare. And I'm under the impression that this was something that would help folks. You know, with the adjunct professors, it's a great program to bring people who are not, I mean, I'm preaching to the choir, but people who are not regular professors, bringing their real-world experience to our educational system. And I'd like to make sure that we continue opportunities for them to continue to get healthcare. Um, and so I'd like to get some more information about that. And again, it's not material. My big concern really was these Roberta Willis scholarships, which we've, we've talked about. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for letting me chime in on that one. I wasn't able to ask that in the, the last meeting.
Uh, thank you. And we're going a little bit over time, but I think, um, I see Representative Cabros de Gra has her hand up and so.
I appreciate that and I will be quick so that perhaps this could be answered in a future working session or by email. I, I'm just kind of curious if, how does OHE evaluate the effectiveness of the scholar, of the scholarship in increasing access for, to any of the higher education institutes for any lower income or underrepresented students? Just curious if there's demographics or, or something that could be shared with us to kind of get an idea on that? And, and are there any proposed changes to funding levels for eligibility criteria?
So we actually, it's kind of interesting that you bring this up. We, we, we have an, uh, an IES grant from the federal government. We have an individual working on exactly what you're looking for.
And do you, the grants already come in, so we don't have to worry about it disappearing?
Finishing, uh, you know, we, we've hired an employee. She's been working on it for quite some time. We can get some data put together. But everything you've, you've asked for is exactly the reason why we brought, we, we applied for this grant, received this grant. And so that we can actually know the effectiveness of how we're delivering the, the, both scholarship and the grant and the effectiveness of it going forward. So we know who's getting the money. We're trying to, we're trying to really, you know, dissect. And we do have the ability, you know, geographically as far as, you know, who's giving us the fastest information? Where is the majority of the Roberta Willis Scholarship money going? I can't give you a student's name, but I can give you a zip code. And so, um, it's been really effective. And, um, you know, the, the questions you were asking, I think, can be answered in a, in a relatively short diagram. We did, we did offer, um, uh, sort of a, a matrix of how we issue the money. I think the way to best answer the questions that have been proposed is to actually put the allocations in. So you can see when we get the money. We can show you when we issue the money. Much of it frankly is a little fluid. Not all of the colleges are responding appropriately. Some of them are delayed in their responses. And so we have to take that into account when we're bundling these groups of money. So there is a little fluidity. The good news is frankly, we work hand in glove with OPM. The money is not going anywhere other than where it ultimately should be going to. Qualified students are all well documented. It's a, it's a question of trying to expedite the timing so it falls in line with, with the students' requests. And I think we can get that answer for you.
Thanks so much and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you. Um, I don't see any additional questions. I will just say that, you know, I mean, the Roberta Willis, I sat next to Roberta Willis for a number of years. You know, um, we wouldn't have named this program after her if, um, you know, if this wasn't a very worthy program. I mean, obviously, it, you know, this is money, much needed money that goes to low-income students in Connecticut. All the recipients are based on need. We just want it to work well and we want it to work, you know, so that in a timely manner, so that students who are making decisions about where to go to college have full knowledge of what, what information, what financial aid will be afforded to them through this program. And I know that that's your goal too. Um, I will follow up with you between now and, um, you know, our decision-making meeting to sort of see if we can get some answers to some of the questions that members still have. And we can talk about that at, um, at a subsequent meeting if there's, uh, the opportunity affords itself. So thank you very much for your presentation today and for the answers that you've. So thank you very much for your presentation today and for the answers that you will um are forthcoming sometime in the near future.
And, and as always, you know, we're here to help. Uh, you know, we're all on the same team, we're all trying to work with whoever's in the best interest of the state and the students. So, uh, you know, if you need to call our office independently, you know, we're certainly willing to entertain those questions and, and so forth. Obviously, we'd like to work through the chairs, but if representatives have individual questions that aren't taken up at these meetings, uh, we're committed to helping out and getting you the answers.
But they need to go through the, the administrative, madam administrator says that all of us get the same answers. So please, please take that route. Thank you.
Thank you. The, um, I, for members of the subcommittee, I think that we are expecting UConn in about twenty-two minutes. And so um you can either stay on and go dark or you can log on again in twenty-two minutes. We'll have a, a different team of people to answer questions for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for, to the folks from O H E.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. We'll start in a couple of minutes when uh when we gave our our committee members and off until one o'clock. I don't want to short change them on the twenty two minutes I gave them for lunch.
Sounds good.
Hey, everybody. Good to see everybody. Gail Garber, UConn Government Relations.
And then Rika.
Good afternoon. Rika Rin, Associate Vice President of Budget Planning and Institutional Research. And Patrick.
Hi, everybody. I'm Pat McKenna with Government Relations.
And then, and just in case Lisa, why don't you introduce yourself now also?
Sure. I'm the AVP of Budget at UConn Health.
Okay, great. Thanks for uh doing that. You we have your written responses. I think most members have had a chance to to look through them if if you want to for I mean, they're pretty extensive. If you want to sort of give us a high level overview and then members can ask questions if they had about any clarifying questions about those. Then we'll see if there's any additional questions that members might have to pose for you today.
Okay, excellent. And full agreement again, we have the detail in all of the responses. So we'll just we'll just go through them. And feel free to stop at any time when we're when we're going through there. The first one was the UConn budget fiscal year twenty five, twenty six projected. Well, said somebody? No. And we also had a request for more historical data. So in the back and then one of the attachments is fiscal year two thousand four to fiscal year twenty twenty six in a detailed spreadsheet also. So that's back there. So just starting, we we pointed out and really just pointing that eighty percent of the revenues that we do depend on our budget come from our students and other outward outside resources. So grants and other aspects and twenty percent is coming from the state. The first, the first graph that we had there, one of those aspects, though, is we are really limited on just increasing our tuition. So the graph shows the public flagship universities. And we are right now the top for fiscal year twenty five. We're the highest public flagship for tuition and fees in the country. So in doing so and looking over, you know, where what our levers are and how we're how we do that, we have to watch this and make sure that, you know, we remain focused on it. So our tuition and fees are affordable and also competitive in our market. And then on the next page, thanks, I think Patrick's driving. So if we go to the next page, we just had the detail for the fiscal twenty five forecast here. Note that it does include the latest holdback that came out on March seventh. So we have it as up to date as we can. And just to, you know, go straight to the bottom line. So in fiscal twenty five, we are basically in balance. So we, you know, do do project to be able to balance our cash for the fiscal year. And then the twenty six projection that walks through, we do have it with the current proposed governor's proposed state budget. So with that, you'll see at the top, that's the two hundred and thirty four point six million dollars for state support. And then at the bottom, though, is the differential. So with that proposal and our current forecasting for fiscal twenty six, that includes tuition and fee increases and some expense adjustments for it. We have an eighty four point one million dollar shortfall from just the current proposed governor's budget.
Can I just pause you just for a second? I don't want to, you know, derail us too much, but this is very important context, I think, for our conversation. And I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. On this, you know, I've, you know, the first sort of notable thing, of course, is that the one time revenue, ARPA and carry forward revenue sort of drops out of your revenue projections from between fiscal year twenty five and twenty six. Your ongoing state support is, you know, eleven million dollars higher, but sort of in the range of what it has been recently. Your eighty four million dollars short in fiscal year twenty six after losing that ninety five million dollars of carry forward. But I guess it's because there are certain, you know, first off, there's some, you anticipate some revenue increases besides just in the block, just in the block grant. Grants and contracts, auxiliary enterprises make up a, you know, and, you know, a couple of those increases. But you also show increases in in your personal services line, of course, and also in other, other aspects of your budget. What, 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 what assumptions are you using to estimate changes in some of those revenue lines that you might pick out one or two of the more notable ones and changes in your expenditure and in your expenditure lines?
Yeah. So the I think the first one on the expenditure side, the personnel services, we're using that estimated three percent. That was basically in with the governor's proposal. Just everyone still knows there are no approved union increases at this point in time. So the collective bargaining agreements don't have any. So that is purely an estimate. We don't know. We have to wait until those are finalized and approved by the legislature before we'd have any final numbers in there. But to kind of mirror what the governor had in his proposal, that's the increase we have in there. The other increases, though, if we go down to the other section, you'll see there are increases overall in almost everything. But the other expenses and our energy, we really focus on trying to mirror what inflation is going to be across everything that we have on our purchasing. So again, as for the students, especially in other expenses, we deal with what most all the families are dealing with throughout Connecticut and the country. So our housing and dining, especially our dining program, we are seeing double digit increases in food costs across the board. So trying to balance that with the need to maintain the services that we provide, that estimate is actually in there. So there are some increases in food that's anywhere from five percent upwards of eighteen percent depending on the items. The other aspect, just to point out, the larger one, again, student financial aid. So making sure that we are affordable and we are actually providing the ability to all students to attend UConn. We do have to provide financial aid, and you'll see that that's going up approximately eighteen million dollars. It's a little over five percent for just the financial aid. And that's part of when we talk about the tuition and fee line, we're really looking at it, and we'll talk about this later. What is the net effect to the university? Just raising tuition and giving it all away in financial aid, the bottom line, if if it's not positive, that's not a positive thing for us. So again, looking at all the levers, especially on on the on the student side, we're looking at number of students, we have to look at our housing and dining program, the in in out of state mix, and then how much financial aid we also need to do to balance that all out. So all of that is kind of built into that expense lines also as as we're been moving forward.
You just alluded to the tuition and of course, the, you know, finance related financial aid issue. Is there information later on in the in the answers that talks a little bit more about tuition rates and enrollment increases that would explain to us more about how your tuition revenues are changing?
Yeah, we have a what's called the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan or SIM plan that we're actually working on. And one of the questions later on, Nathan first, our vice president will get into that some more details there.
Great. I want to ask it now, then. I'll wait until then. Thank you. You can you can keep going.
On the next question, number two is how UConn is preparing for the loss of the one time and ARPA funding for it. So going back kind of one of those items that we started, the university in in over the past couple of years, but we're in the process of implementing some longer term financial sustainability plans. So not only for the current year and twenty six, but this is really focusing on the out years also and how the changing landscape in higher education is going to balance with what we're doing. So we know that we've done this. We've actually the original budget request. Well, remember, if we go back from twenty five where the state support was, we did request twenty six million less in fiscal twenty six and forty one point five million less in fiscal twenty seven. So just year over year, again, we are continuing to focus on that. As we do every year, we will, we will get more and more efficiencies and we'll be able to do that. But we don't have one, one item, or we're not able to absorb the full magnitude of that eighty four million that's proposed in the twenty six in a one time budget. Then really moving to number three. There is a question about the DEI initiatives and federal funding, some of the impacts of changes for NIH funding and how much that's at stake and how it will really affect the university and kind of what we're doing. So for DEI and to start, I will turn that over to our Provost and the Labor, just to go over some of the aspects that, you know, us as a university and really higher education is doing across the country.
Thank you very much. So yes, at UConn, we're leaning into our core values. As you know, we are the state's flagship land and sea grant institution. That means we have a mission of access and opportunity. We have a mission of affordability and diversity, equity and inclusion are important to fulfilling that mission. We do already comply with federal law. If we need to pivot because of the evolving situation in Washington, we'll do so in a way that's consistent and aligns with our mission and values. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to number four is really the FY twenty six deficit mitigation plan. And I think Representative Dad, this is going to get into that SIM plan that I talked about earlier for really looking at the long and again, multi year, long term financial sustainability is going to be on how we manage our enrollment and items moving forward. So I'll I'll actually ask our Vice President for Enrollment Management, Nathan first, to actually give us an update on SIM.
Yeah, so we're working on the SIM plan now. There it's a part of a natural progression, of course, working outward from the university strategic plan. Now it was is natural for us to focus on, you know, what does the enrollment look like at the university moving forward, but also we're working to be responsive to budgetary constraints and the concerns of the legislature as well as to address workforce needs and and all these sorts of things, including, you know, focusing on cost containment and focusing on our rankings, making sure that the reputation of the university continues to to remain high. We believe very strongly in that and that the value of the education that we're providing to students is one of the reasons why we have, you know, sixty four thousand applicants applying to the university this year. So where we are in process right now with that is that we formulated some some draft goals and then we'll we're building up the strategies and the tactics associated with, you know, how do we grow enrollment? How do we make sure that we have considered as we add programs, you know, the costs associated with that? How do we increase our student success rates that are called for through the strategic plan to the the levels that we would like to see them go? How do we engage students that we currently aren't serving now? For example, adult learners who maybe have some credits but no degree. And so what does the university need to do? And how do we need to maneuver in order to be able to bring them back into the university and and get their degree and then reenter the workforce and contribute to the state's economy? These are all just kind of the examples of of some of the things that we're taking a look at. To be clear, this will be a living, breathing strategic enrollment management plan. When you hear us say SEM plan, by the way, that's what that stands for, Strategic Enrollment Management Plan. And we anticipate that it'll have rolling targets that will revisit on an annual basis, you know, several years out. Looking at what did we achieve associated with the plan and the tactics this year? And how do we now need to adjust in the subsequent years? So and that's just a natural part of the process as it would be for us to be in in constant dialogue with you all in terms of where the university is going and and what we're doing there. So happy to answer any additional questions you may have about it, or if there's an aspect of it that we haven't addressed, we can talk about that, too.
I'll just ask a quick question because this goes back to your, the projected increase in tuition revenue, which is goes from five hundred and seventy four million to six hundred and seventeen million. If I remember correctly, you don't have a tuition increase
Right.
for next year, at least not one that you've adopted yet. I I know that you have you decided not to not to, or is that still that's something, I guess, the Board of Trustees?
Yeah, Jeff, I don't like, we are not increasing tuition for the next year. So that just to be clear and easy about that. The main reason that you're seeing growth in the revenue lines there is a result of some amount of growth in actual students and change in in residency mix. Where we're seeing growth in enrollment is from students from outside the state. And as I think many folks know, the number of high school graduates in the state is now plateauing declining. So we're we're really working hard to make sure we keep. keep the the number of Connecticut residents at the university where it's at. Um, but then where we're seeing growth at the university is is coming from out-of-state students and that changes um the revenue, the tuition revenue picture um quite substantially.
Um, when you enroll out-of-state students, that I imagine that also drives the student financial aid num- a number up?
It does.
I mean, they they're charged a lot more. Do they subsequently also receive larger financial aid packages?
Yes, uh definitely, uh because the cost is quite uh quite a lot higher, obviously, for out-of-state students. But we're only doing that to the degree that it's um, you know, required for students with financial need. Or otherwise, you know, we're recruiting talented students to the university with a merit scholarship that wouldn't otherwise come to the university um or or consider us. And um, as you know, many of those students, they graduate and they stay in the state and become contributing members of of the state of Connecticut.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
And with that, I just want to mention too that, you know, the board did consider the tuition. This was just a pause. So there is a one-year um tuition pause and then hopefully the goal is to bring a multi-year tuition increase plan back to the board um for for uh next year as we continue to do it. And the focus was really on that first um item we talked about, knowing that we are already the highest uh, you know, flagship public institution across the country. We still have to maintain competitiveness with these other institutions um for the applications and everything that we need to generate. So when we're looking to continue to grow, we just can't also outprice price ourselves also. So that is part of that SIM plan where we try to balance all of these levers um for that to be to try to, you know, hit these new targets for growth. And then last on number four, you know, the SIM plan is probably the most important because that is our revenue growth where we're actually looking. But in addition to that, you know, we we still have a lot of other key initiatives that are underway. So we are constantly looking at the efficiency. Um, so how we deliver education, we our faculty ratios, advising, class size, all of these items and how we can actually deliver the education. And of course fundraising, that's been front and center. So we are focused on that, continuing to, you know, increase one, the endowment, but two, we do have a capital campaign or, you know, overall campaign of one point five billion dollars um that will be kicking off in the next couple of months. Uh, the research awards are, of course, research as our one used uh university is very important to us. This will be of the highest focus, especially as we start to budget next year. We are constantly, you know, daily paying attention to what's happening across the nation from our federal government and how that might affect our research and our research program. But continue to grow research is a is a focus of the university. Um, and then really looking at new revenues, you know, example here is strategic industry partnerships. So if as federal money might be become more scarce, how can we actually partner with some of the other industries and continue to grow research in other opportunities such as scholarships um through our industry partnerships? Um, and then the the other one too is really reallocating resources. So we are focused on what we're actually doing. So the provost and many might have heard has been reviewing uh low enrollment programs and other ways of classes to be able to utilize our faculty and our staff maybe in a more efficient manner and be able to reallocate those to some other higher priorities um that we will continuously do. So that's not a one-time thing. That is something we will be doing through the um out-years also. Um, jump jumping to number five. Uh, so number five, basically, I think it's just an overall question on unrestricted fund balances. Um, so we we do have overall been heard that there's been talk about reserves or fund balances. And what's what's been presented um actually is is not the case and doesn't really align with um what we have at the university. So at UConn, the, you know, there's there's basically numerous budget lines that account for all of this. Uh, there there are many, many accounts spread throughout the institution that are funding critical current and future needs of the university. So combining all of these into one large number is what has been presented. We've heard four hundred, four four hundred plus million. We do have a graph here under this question that will actually detail out the balance at the university. You can see in fiscal twenty-five, it's estimated a little over two hundred million dollars.
Are you making just zooming a little bit um from seventy-five percent maybe up to ninety percent? There were hundreds even great. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Patrick. Um, so with that, again, you know, to actually make this look like it's a pool of two hundred million dollars or one actual balance, that would be a quote-unquote rainy day fund or anything is not the case. Again, this is mul- hundreds, if not thousands of accounts throughout each school and college and some researchers. Um, and and all of that combined does get us up to the two hundred thousand. So just on high level, I'll kind of walk through a breakdown of what's in the chart. So the top top line is operating and you'll see that's a ninety-three point six million dollars. So on operating, these are funds, again, spread out all over the uh schools and colleges and institution. But for current contracts, we have for faculty startup costs, lab space, lab renovation for new faculty um and the staff and infrastructure around supporting new research. So every time we hire a researcher, there is support that is generated with that. And these funds will be spent over usually the first five years of that new researcher's um startup for it. Um, with that, there's also funding for emerging AI and quantum initiatives, and our president has talked about that numerous times. Uh, but those funds would be part of the startup for these new initiatives when we are trying to build those, both the AI and the quantum, to be able to um attract more and greater outstanding federal and um industry partnerships for funding opportunities. Uh, and then just some other things, like one of the larger ones to point out with, uh, one of these is really on equipment replacement. So our researchers have, when we get our indirect cost recovery, it comes to the institution. That helps fund our research mission, but the researchers actually do get a portion of it. So I'll use a just an example. If a researcher would like it, a new five thousand dollar microscope, they might get a thousand dollars a year and be saving that up in their account until they can actually purchase and then re-replenish equipment in their lab. So at any point in time, it look might look like they have a balance and then it could all go away the next day. But again, hundreds of those out and around in what we call our operating balances for it. The next one um down is our capital balance. Uh, and you'll see that one's at sixty-six point two million dollars. So to be very clear, though, these are capital expenses that are not funded by the state. So separately, we we do have our UConn two thousand program. We have the state bonding program. That pays for a a very significant portion of the capital expenses and that, you know, we are greatly appreciated of that. Additionally, though, we do put aside money every single year. The majority, though, is including deferred maintenance. So these are items that, you know, it's very hard to fundraise for. They're they're, you know, we have over a billion dollars that would actually be need to done in deferred maintenance, which includes upgrading electrical, plumbing, sidewalks, parking lots, roofs, exteriors, windows, all of these items. And as everybody knows, sometimes they, you know, when a boiler breaks, we have to fix it. These funds are going through that plan and are either fully committed right now. Or for instance, we have a twelve million dollar refresh plan for our our student housing over the summer. So we hold those funds aside. So over the summer, as soon as the students leave, we can actually get all of the um trades in to be able to do those plans. But anytime we have a project that goes to our board, it is fully funded. And again, there are there are hundreds of different items that this would actually fund. Um, but when those projects are approved, we make sure that we have the funds to pay those bills upfront. So they can be paid over the next probably two years or so. And then the university will always put more funds into that capital plan to try to keep on top as much as we can, especially with our deferred maintenance.
Uh, Representative Corey Perez has his uh hand up. I just wanted to ask him if he had a question.
Quick question. Uh, how much longer are you counting on the UConn two thousand funds to sustain some of the capital projects?
Um, so la- last year, what we did get the extension of the UConn two thousand funds. Um, so right now that is the final. It it has three main projects left that we are focused on. Um, so it has our Gantt project, which is uh basically an expansion of our academic and teaching space. It has the um the athletics, which enables us to keep up with our Title IX initiatives. We need to do with our athletics and work on some increase in revenues um for like ticket sales and expansion at Gampel. And then the final one is what we're calling Science Two. Um, and that will be wrapped into multi-initiatives, including the AI initiatives that we have out there for expansion in our research and our activities. So those are probably going to be, you know, the majority of that work over the next five to six years. Um, but that'll be the focus on those. Again, separate than that is all of the other initiatives, though the um those the UConn two thousand does have a small amount of deferred maintenance, I believe around fifty million dollars over those same five years also to help us with this line in addition to the sixty-six million um that we see here. And then just the the last one to go on is the debt service. And this one is just really with the bonding that we talked about. The university also has issued bonds and some um self-revenue bonds that we pay directly. Um, but our debt service line um just holds our debt payments um coverage that we need for our bond rating. So this actually keeps the interest rate down, not only for the university, but for the statewide when we do any of our bonds under the UConn two thousand program for it. And then um to move on to the next question, uh number six, what's the percent of state support in fiscal twenty-six with the governor's proposed budget? So if we take a look and on on this particular graph down, you can see on twenty-six. But um with the current proposed budget, the state support would be fourteen percent, which would be six percentage points lower um than we actually had in fiscal twenty-five. So just doing the breakout of the total revenues there, you'll see that the uh student revenue portion would jump up to sixty-two percent. And then all of our others and research is probably one of the major ones, just in the others too, would be about twenty-five percent uh right now, if we looked at um the overall revenue sport for uh next year. And then if we just go to the next page, uh we reviewed this in the appropriations committee. But this was our breakdown to where we currently are. So the blue bars on the left-hand side, again, are the university's request and the dark blue. And then the light blue section on top would be the if we had that quote-unquote a three percent salary increase. Um, so to match the governor's budget for it. Uh, so we'll see, you know, the three twenty-six uh in fiscal twenty-five, the university's request originally was three hundred. The governor's original starting uh point for that is the two twenty-seven. Uh, and that basically the difference between those two is the one-time funds that was removed for it. Um, so then the light green, the seven million was approximately a three percent salary increase just on uh the governor's proposed budget, and that's where the two hundred and thirty-four point six million dollars in the proposed budget comes from. And again, trying if we had a three percent increase overall, our shortfall um would need a request from the state of three hundred and eighteen point seven million or an eighty-four point one million dollar shortfall between us and the governor's proposed budget. Uh, and the lower graphs just kind of break out the two sections individually. Um, as we said, the the overall original request goes from three twenty-six for the university down to three hundred and twenty-six and two eighty-four point seven and twenty-seven. Um, and then the final uh graph at the bottom is just the differential between the proposed three percent um uh increase. As we see, if it's just on the block grant, it's about one percent for all of our employees, where the eighteen point five million and and on the far left would be a three percent increase for our employees. Uh, next, moving on, number seven. Um, so the really the focus on the economic impact of the state um and the most impactful programs overall, you know, that we administer. So again, and I think we made this uh point that we have tried to do, and you'll see the blue link there at the bottom. We actually do have a financial impact report and a community impact book that we actually publish. So if everybody has a chance, please go to the link and you can go through all of the details. Um, but we know one of our focuses to help fuel um the innovation and entrepreneurship of the state. So we, you know, engage directly with the businesses, large and small, throughout the state. Um, and looking at, uh, you know, hundreds of not thousands of hours that we work with our education outreach to Connecticut residents each year. So one of our focus, you know, especially UConn researchers, working with communities across the state. Uh, but the item is really looking to how we spread out through all one hundred and sixty-nine ti- um cities and towns throughout the state. And then even in the education role, um our education programs are, you know, not only for our our stores and the regional campuses, but for the play a big role in K through twelve education for both the educators for those schools and the students. Um, at the bottom, just one little snapshot from the overall impact report. Just to highlight, again, each year, we actually look at the overall impact of UConn on the state and you'll see for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, it's increased to eight point five billion dollars. Looking at that, the UConn is about four point nine and UConn Health is about three point six. But just to point out, on the right-hand side, you'll see the jobs. But overall, the um university supports over forty-eight thousand jobs in the state. And broken down there, you can see direct of who we directly employ, the indirect through our actual um contracts for um vendors that we employ. And then of course, an induced effect on employees. So not only our employees or the employees that work through the university, but going out and spending on on our just housing and dining and other aspects throughout the state gets us to that overall level. One of the items that we actually monitor closely every year and we update this report every year, and we'll make sure the legislature continues to get that. Next, number eight. The uh five-year enrollment trend by campus, including some future year targets and some discussions. And I'll turn that back over to Nathan first.
So um the table's there in front of you and you can see where we've had growth, actually have reached record numbers of students. But you know, do a little bit of a deeper dive. You can see that that is disproportionately at stores and at the Stanford campus. Um, other campuses like Avery Point and Waterbury have seen um some slow decline in terms of the the total number of undergraduate students that they have there. Hartford remains pretty strong. Um, but you know, again, as I as I pointed out before, a lot of that growth is is coming from um students outside the state of Connecticut, given the number of high school graduating seniors. And so um, you know, as we we look to the future with the SEM plan, it it does suggest that um we will um be interested in trying to continue to grow um our our undergraduate student enrollment, as well as, you know, beginning to focus on our our graduate student programs um as well, um which is something that we haven't spent as much time on in the past. So it's exciting to begin to roll up our sleeves and and uh and and work on that. Certainly, we have really great graduate programs and and strong enrollments and and many of them. But we want to, we're working with our our vice provost and dean of the graduate school um on our plans um that way.
Could could you, I see Representative Walker, I'm gonna let her ask her question first, and then I have a follow-up question as well.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you so far for the presentation. You your detail is is really helpful. So on the on the uh various campuses, do you have a breakdown on what your costs are for each one of the campuses? I'm curious uh for operational purposes, how much each one of them is um actually costing us? And then the number of in-state and out-of-state students that you have at each one of these uh locate at each one of the satellites, we I'd like to see that too. Um, Um, because I I I'm I'm concerned or interested in, I know some some of the people within Connecticut want to stay um, off-campus and they want to do it there. But then a lot of them are being directed to the off-site because that is where they can fill. So then I would like to see the number of of um, in-state and out-of-state in-store. So if we could get those those details, I would appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, I was gonna ask a somewhat related question, that we're looking at the same chart, of course, so um. Uh, my, I mean, I just a general, more generally, though, Stanford and Yukon are the and stores are the two places where you offer housing opportunities. I know you're looking at, we're about to do that in Hartford, and you're looking at um, potentially uh, adding housing opportunities in at Avery Point. Um, is is that the I mean, is that, is that the reason why Stanford and and stores are growing and the others are not? So so I mean, sort of gets a backhanded way of asking Representative Walker's question, which is my, I suspect that the students at Waterbury and Avery Point and Hartford are almost all in-state students who can who can commute. Um, and that the out-of-state students in the growth area are, you're experiencing that growth in places where you offer housing. Is that, is that accurate?
That's a, that's a piece of it for sure. It's not just housing, though, right? I mean, it's really good academic programs. In the example of Stanford, we've added computer science and digital media and a number of other um, programs there that have made it attractive. It also is attractive for students from outside the state. Of course, if you don't have housing for out-of-state students, for traditional first-year students, you're not going to attract out-of-state students typically, because, you know, where where are they gonna live? Um, but um, in the case of Stanford, it's it's an attractive option, even for our international students who are interested in being somewhat close to New York City. Um, and so for all those reasons and more, you know, that we've seen the growth at the Stanford campus stores is is, I would say, housing, yeah, it's a factor, it's our flagship campus, you know. Um, top-notch academic programs and and everything that we have going on there with um, athletics and and our success and a and a full comprehensive experience, um, you know, recreation, student health and wellness. Um, other programs, academic support programs that we have there, that's very attractive to to students. So it's a little bit of a different story for every campus. Um, it's fair to say that as we think about adding housing um, at our Avery Point campus or, you know, the Hartford campus coming up. Um, we do think that'll change the conversation with students um, who are looking for a more traditional residential experience. When we survey the students who choose not to go to Yukon, who who wanted to, that's what they're telling us, is that, you know, I wanted to, I wanted to go to a place where I could live in a residence hall and and be a part of a community. And so for all those reasons, that's that's and more, that's what we're looking at.
And then I'm sure there are a lot of nuances to the way that you might answer the next question that I have. But I thought maybe broadly speaking, you could talk about the relationship between increased enrollment and increased demand for services or, you know, expenditures at your campuses. Um, and how and educational quality. Um, I, you know, I imagine they're all interlinked, and I'm trying to figure out how expansion, you know, how much does, obviously, expansion of the number of students will bring in additional revenue, but what is the relationship to that with the additional expenses required to actually educate and support them? Um, and other measures of educational quality that you might run into. Uh, just incidentally, I'll tell you, I ran into a French professor last weekend who told me she was teaching a French class with two hundred students. Um, and I'm I'm trying to sort of get my mind around how you learn French with a hundred ninety-nine other people at the same time. Um, and I think that there is, there is a relationship between it, um, you know, you know, things like class size and the number of faculty in the student body. And so I'm trying to, like, maybe you could just speak more broadly about, you know, how all these things interlink and and whether increased enrollment um, i- is an effective strategy to solve budget problem, problems.
Yeah, I'll start and then pass it to our provost, so um, to comment further, but I'll just share with you initially that um, this is the most common theme coming out of our SEM plan conversations. And really having a a better understanding of the interaction and linkages associated with enrollment growth and and the um, resource demands that that implicates, be it, you know, academic advisors or um, you know, faculty or or staff and student health and wellness or or what have you. So those are all things that we need to consider, and it's it's not, you know, when you add a student, it's not just a pocket, the additional tuition and and fee revenue. No, we actually need to take that revenue and invest in the in the services that that student needs to to be successful at the university. So Provost Delve, I don't know if you would add to that?
Absolutely, and class size is certainly something we're looking at. There are certain disciplines where we can teach larger classes and teach them effectively. And um, as someone who taught many large lecture classes uh, in art history and in women's gender and sexuality studies myself for many years, I would never say that um, a large class can't be an exciting and impactful place to learn. But there are ways to do that effectively, and it works well in some disciplines and not in others. So these are things we have to consider very carefully. I am very concerned about professional advising because that is essential to student success. Some of our professional advisors already are carrying caseloads uh, that are higher than the loads recommended by their national professional organization. So uh, to Nathan's point, we can't just add students and not also add the services. Um, counselors, uh, advisors, tutoring services and other wraparound academic and and personal, social and emotional supports. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to number nine. Patrick, if you wanted to scroll up a little bit. Um, and really focused on, you know, changes in the administration levels over the years and and could we use that to reduce the cost of attendance? So I think the first paragraph here was kind of what we were just going through. One of, one of the aspects is we do always focus on what is the return on investment? Or why would a student actually come to Yukon? Um, to make sure that, you know, that overall tuition and fee and the cost for the student that that they that they need to do over their career of getting, you know, their degree is worth it for the student when we actually go out. And you'll see here, just at the bottom, Georgetown Georgetown's uh, Center on Education in the Workforce uh, did over a study on this, and for the University of Connecticut, um, the overall education or or degree could provide a a return on investment over one point five million dollars over an average forty-year working career. Um, so that is one of the items in line with also um, the graduation. So we want to make sure we are still, um, we are the number two in the country right now, but at four point one years to graduation, to ensure that we're very efficient on making sure our students graduate, um, not only graduate, but also in a timely manner. Uh, but then going back to the administrative side of of that equation, there there are a couple of items, and we put some of the graphs here on the next page, if you want to go um, there, Patrick. But there there's a lot of ways and items out there. We just picked some of the measurements we have. And I think the, one of the things is people measure administration in lots of different ways. But if we look at the overall two items here, Yukon has the highest student-to-administrator ratio of three hundred and one, three hundred and three to one, and the faculty-to-administrator ratio of twenty to one of these top thirty-two public universities per U S News and World Report. But separately, even on that one, if we go down to the next chart, we also track um, just where we are as a percent of our administration overall to what we're actually looking at right now. Um, so one item is on the top line, that's the overall students. And you can go, you'll see, this goes all the way back to nineteen eighty-eight. But we have increased from twenty-one thousand three ninety-eight up to thirty-two thousand eight seventy-eight. And then the red line, though, is the percent of our cost that are are would actually be administration had um, a percentage for the salaries. And you'll see that that used to be back in ninety-eight, two point two percent, and it's hovered right around there. We have reduced it over the last couple of years, and we are now under two percent for that same comparison in the administration. So we're trying to hold that flat, and we've actually been able to reduce it a little. Um, but again, these are our information for what we have, and we don't believe that the administration is really causing that uh, an effect on the cost of attendance for our students. Moving on to number ten. Um, and this one is really uh, focusing on some research studies and the federal funding available. So how Yukon is incorporating AI basically into our education and our day-to-day operations. And um, I'll turn it over to the provost, uh, just to talk a little bit about um, AI and moving forward for the university.
Sure, we have, thanks so much. We have a number of initiatives around AI uh, across multiple spaces. Um, of course, we have a number of researchers uh, doing work in AI and machine learning uh, and really some very, very exciting, forward-looking research happening there. Um, more so though in the teaching space, uh, I can address both ways that we're helping our faculty learn how to use AI constructively in the classroom, and that's where our Center for Excellence in Teaching and Learning takes the lead. We have numerous workshops uh, to help faculty uh, learn how to use AI as a teaching tool uh, in terms of instructional design, uh, class design, teaching students to learn AI effectively. We're also uh, teaching AI itself in the curriculum to students. So in the fall, we have a class coming online on AI literacy. Our School of Computing is taking the lead in developing that class. It will be required for all engineering majors and will have five hundred seats as an elective of that will be open uh, to all students across the university. So that's a very important initiative in terms of training our students. We also have a number of majors and graduate certificates that will be coming online, uh, including an undergraduate major in AI and machine learning uh, and a graduate certificate in AI and business that will be coming soon. Thank you.
Great. And then finally, our our last question um, for the university, we have athletics budget and some revenue breakdowns. So in total, there, we we did, we did submit the actual budget for twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five for it. Um, but we all know Yukon athletics, yeah, not only a, you know, a big point of pride for our state, but also it's an economic driver for um, our region and and the state to in total. So just examples during hot, hot uh, basketball and hockey games in Hartford and our football games uh, in East Hartford, the economies are positively impacted by a number of things for hotels, stays, restaurants, parking, just just to name a few. Um, but we are focused on athletics. Our main aspect is, you know, to increase sponsorships. Look at fundraising to actually also increase those outside revenues. And then, as we mentioned before, even with some of the um, items we're doing on the capital side, is to really focus on the return on revenue for increased ticket sales and other other revenue and sponsorship items for um, our athletics in total. But just for the budget, if we go down to the bottom line, just our our the, I'm second the bottom line for the total operating expenses. Just to point out, we can see it's it's been pretty steady. And fiscal twenty-three was ninety point seven million. It did jump up in twenty-four to a hundred point seven, and then in twenty-five, the current budget is about ninety-seven point eight million dollars. Um, so we do, we do work with the athletics as like every single department in the university and every school in college. Um, when we do our budget development and we make sure we monitor and track them throughout the year, so they stay on balance. And then just at the bottom, one of one of the impact slides too, from the economy, that we just point out some things on the overall athletics. You know, we we always make a one statement that even though we know that the university does support the athletics, we we couldn't even buy half the advertising that we get from having these athletic teams from our hockey, um, field hockey, baseball, but especially our basketball teams. Um, as we saw last night, and we'll see again tonight, um, and they play through the tournament. Um, you know, getting the Yukon name out is invaluable as we continue to move forward for it. Um, so, Mr. Chair, I believe that is our last question on the university side.
There, there are a couple of hands up, and so uh, I'm gonna ask if Representative, I'll call in Representative Nathan, followed by Representative Walker.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I hate to take the the first position from the chair of the committee, but if she's okay, I'll do, okay. Um, so my question was, we recently passed a bill um, to allow student athletes to get uh, additional um, sponsorship money. Is the university, like, there's any risk in um, monies that are coming in for sponsorship? And um, I'm gonna go back to my deck here, because you took yours down. But if you look at that line item, um, uh, you have like earned revenue. Um, you have forty-seven million this year or in fiscal year twenty-four, and it going down to thirty-four. I am guessing that that a lot of that revenue has come as a result of the tournament going longer and getting more sponsorship and more um, more revenue coming in as a result of that. Do we feel like there's any exposure that people might say, hey, I'm gonna go ahead and um, give money to the athlete for sponsorship instead of sponsoring the university? Because that could, that's a pretty sensitive number, in my opinion. Um, I I mean, obviously, the other operating expenses can be adjusted for that. But just wondering what your sort of thoughts are on that whole thing.
So number one, I I would just say, I think it's a direct partnership between the university and the athletes. Um, you know, bringing those sponsorships together and working together. Um, the majority that really, and especially focus on the university, will will use an average life, you know, of an athlete might be three years or so. Those those sponsorships will continue well past all of that. So um, there are always going to be some overlap. But I think the relationship with the university is going to be the a strong relationship where, you know, we would continue to focus and increase. So um, I don't believe there'll be, you know, direct, you know, big competition there. We'll continue to do that and work on that. Um, we've, we've seen over, even over the past two years, when you, when you have championships and you play well, you get a lot more interest. So, you know, our athletic director has been very, you know, positive and and working tirelessly to make sure that we can get those funds and continue to drive those in. So, and I would put that also on the foundation side and the fundraising side, it's that same thing. Um, so the more that we're out there and the more that we have that, the more we're seeing on a return for fundraising and and the foundation increases also supporting athletics.
I mean, I'm kind of thinking of it like we have professional teams that get sponsorship money. Um, and I'm wondering, you know, and in, if you have an individual star athlete on that team, the money is gonna be focused on them and the university gets some sort of credit or whatever in direct advertising or indirect sponsorship. But I'm just kind of thinking, you know, a lot of these um, sponsors, you know, have limited budgets. They're also, um, there could be some exposure. So um, it'll, I know it's uncharted territory for everyone, um, so we'll have to see how it goes. But it's something that I've been thinking about, and I know revenue's not our lane, but I'm kind of looking at overall. Um, I don't want to get ourselves in a deeper hole because we think more money's coming in for sponsorship, and it's not because it's going to the athletes, so. Uh, which I think they totally deserve, but I'm just kind of trying to think of the big picture. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, uh, Yukon for your uh, your great presentation.
Of course, Representative Walker.
Thank, thank you. Um, first of all, uh, a little, Representative Nathan, all the lanes are ours now, we just take over, okay? So don't worry about it, we're good, we're good. And by the way, I want to say that Yukon's got the most photogenic dog in the country. So everybody knows him, so I hope we're capitalizing on that. I hope he's been giving paw photographs as many paw as possible. Um, I want to talk about, I I don't know, because I'm going through two, two Zooms. Um, did we talk about Roberta Willis? Did we mention that at all? Okay, so can you just tell me um, how uh, how how are you utilizing it? And I know you have some unspent, how do, how do you disperse it to the system so that you utilize all of it within the the year, I'm I'm assuming? Don't everybody jump up?
Yeah, I'm happy to tackle that. I mean, we build it into our financial aid.
process. I mean, everything that we do from the moment that, you know, we start planning, even for next year, we're already looking at the next fiscal year right now to make sure that we're in a position to distribute those funds to students, get them in their hands. And, you know, we do, we do try to put our award amounts out there and help students understand how much financially they're going to get now before they make a decision to enroll in the university. And I know that there's been a lot of conversation about that. The university basically uses multiple year estimates to help us to project what that may look like. And it's worked out really well for us and it's put us in a position to award students the best financial aid award possible so that we can get them to come to the university. And that's what we want to do, right? We want to keep students in the state. We want to keep them enrolled at our institutions. And we're very, very grateful for all the support that we received for Roberta Willis over the years. So.
Can I ask, there was a bit of a snafu that happened about four weeks ago, I guess, or I don't know. The weeks run together, but it happened recently. And there was a concern that maybe we were overpaying out to some of the campuses. Were you affected by that?
We were affected to the degree that we were notified that we had a larger amount that was being dispersed to us late in the process from the Office of Higher Education. And then about a week and a half, two weeks later, we were notified that that was the wrong amount. We were just about to notify students of our awards, but that hadn't happened yet. So actually, we, we kind of just barely avoided a bigger issue there. But the actual amount that was sent to us was quite a bit less at the end of the day. So, you know, for us, no harm to students necessarily. Our staff went through that and we were able to manage through it.
You said, you said just what I wanted to hear, no harm for the students. That's, that was, I think, all my colleagues on here, we all sort of went into a a panic because the whole objective is to support the students. And I think we, we've got to get a better system. Because that should not be something that causes your insecurity with connecting to your students. That's something we need to correct. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. If I could just follow up on that, and then I'll ask, hold on, Representative Dayton again. You know, what's, I guess what's hard to understand about the Roberta Willis program is, again, that there's two sections of it, right? There's the need merit portion of the awards, which where OHE makes those awards directly to students who have demonstrated need but are also have, have had a strong academic record in their high school and so are awarded an need merit award that they can bring to any Connecticut institution. And that's one category. The other category is the need serve awards. That gets distributed, a dollar amount gets distributed to each institution. And then you allocate that to students who meet the eligibility criteria, right? We were asking the Office of Higher Education for some demographic information, but it occurs to me that you probably have that same information. Could you provide to us a demographic profile of, of how you distribute Roberta Willis need awards to your students? The last time I saw information like that was a while ago. If my memory serves me correctly, I think that you distributed all of the need awards to students who had a zero EFC qualification. That, that might have been an unusual year, but certainly almost exclusively to students with a very high degree of need. And I will similarly ask some independent colleges and some of our state universities to sort of give us a similar profile. Because I think what we will see is that each institution distributes that money very differently based on their own internal strategy. Nathan, I guess, sort of the follow up question is, can you tell us anything about how you currently distribute those need awards? Do you, do you ensure that you're giving a maximum award out to fewer number of very needy students? Or do you try to spread that, those scholarship dollars across a broader spectrum of students?
Yeah, I mean, the rules prescribe that are basically guide us here. And we follow that in terms of what the minimum award amount or maximum award amount should be. It is going to go disproportionately to the students with the highest financial need because that's the way we're running things with regard to any of our need based awards. But I think rather than go off the cuff as to what the distribution might look like, I'd just go follow up and get you that information. It'd be interesting to see if it's changed much from the last time you saw it.
Thank you. Representative Dayton.
Thank you. I got so excited talking about basketball. I forgot my key question for today. Just wanted to talk a little bit about your use of P cards. I know we didn't talk about it directly within the committee work, but I know there's been some issues lately. And allow me, if this is getting out of the scope of this committee, that's fine, but I would like to understand what we're doing to ensure that the use of P cards is appropriate and what sort of management controls are in place to ensure that like the incident that happened recently doesn't happen again. And we've had a lot of issues with P card usage and other agencies. And so I'd love to have you talk about this. And, Mr. Chair, if I'm going outside of this lane, you can stop me and I can talk about this somewhere else. But I just thought, since we had them here, it would be good to talk about today, too.
I'm comfortable with the question if, and we have a little bit of extra time, but I would mention that if we end the stores and regional sort of budget conversation earlier, we can move on. I think we can move on to the health center as well. So and my guess is that the response here would have probably also applied to the health center, but maybe Mr. Gagin can explain how that works.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And we can have, we can always have a further conversation also. But the P cards, well, there's two major cards. There are purchasing cards that we have, and there's also travel cards. But they both go through our full, you know, we have policies and procedures, reconciliations, and how we tie it back and how we actually administer them. Just to give you some examples, if people do not follow those policies, we'll actually turn the card down to a dollar. So we have faculty that get rather mad with us when they go to use the card and they can't because they haven't done a reconciliation or something actually happens with it. But I think more importantly, we have on, you know, on the university wide, first of all, the Internal Audit Department continuously looks at our travel and our card use. So we do internal audits, we actually review that, and then we make changes as needed. So when we see improvements that we can actually do and focus on, we will do that. Also, we have, our compliance office is set up, and we have basically a confidential compliance line people can do. And we have had people use that also as another mechanism for if somebody thinks a card is being used wrong or do that, and our compliance team will look into that. So with our guidance, our internal audits and our compliance, it's a continuous feedback loop that we look into this and we continuously monitor. Now, that's not to say that it's 100% perfect, of course, but that's how we, you know, there's never a time where we stop looking at that. It's always something we move forward. So, you know, even examples now, we are, we are putting in a new threshold for travel approvals. So travel approvals that are going to hit a certain threshold will actually go up to myself, the provost, or the president. So, you know, there are already, you know, get a director and a supervisor approval. But then there'll be an extra layer of approval also that we're going to, you know, start to look in. So items like that come out of these audits and come out of other certain things. But again, we can, we can always have further conversation about that in the future, too.
That's great, Mr. Gagin. I think, you know, it sounds like you have read my mind when I hear about the extra approval process, and it's something that you guys are addressing. So I'm looking forward to seeing this in action. And I know we'll probably have an additional discussion, but I did think it would be good to bring up if we had a minute today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. My last question, and it might be the last question for the stores and regional campuses, is you know, when we look at budgets, sometimes things change as we move through the spring. Like, you know, our subcommittee will come up with a set of recommendations and proposals to give to the chairs. Later, the chairs will do the same for when we're passing in a appropriations budget, and then later happens yet again when we actually pass a budget. How confident are you in the projections that you've given? Are there dates or information that will, that will, might change your projections over the coming weeks? And if so, you know, how much do you think your numbers might change and, and why?
So the quick answer is yes, the numbers will always change. So we are on that, as we said, a constant aspect of reducing cost and looking at our revenue. We will close March, though, in the, in the next couple of weeks, and then reforecast and rerun those numbers. So the two major items that, you know, are outstanding will be review of all of our expenses, and we are doing the same process the state is doing now. We meet with every single account and every single school in college, and we are reviewing all of those expenses and see what we can budget next year. So number one, we do hope to find, you know, continue to find more savings on our expense lines. And then number two, you know, we'll, we'll all put on our guessing hat, but Nathan has sent out acceptances. So we are in the middle of that process. And that will lead us to the aspect of the total number of students is always one of the largest things that we can do. Great news. We've seen record actual, you know, interest in the university. So our applications were the highest ever. We are crossing our fingers. That might lead to more enrollment. But as we've been talking about this SIM plan for most of this meeting, we have to have a bed for some of the students, depending on which campus they are. We have to be able to teach them and enroll them in the classes, and we have to provide those support services. So we are looking at that, and I think we're going to make some new projections on that also. But I would hope, you know, by the, you know, let's say the first couple of weeks of April, when we do the reforecasting, those numbers will change, and of course, we will get them to you ASAP.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions, additional questions from members of the committee? I don't see any. So I think that we might be ready to move on to discuss the Yukon Health Center budget. I'm going to see if Senator Flexer is online and
I am.
There she is. All right. Because I was going to ask her if she graciously agreed to serve here this part of the meeting. And just by way of explanation, if I disappear at about 3 o'clock, know that I, I've got to do a thing at my kid's school, and I apologize for missing. I'll, I will, I will check the tape afterwards to make sure I don't miss anything. But I'll turn this over to Senator Flexer. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. I don't know if I should defer to Representative Walker, if we should take a brief break or just go right into Yukon Health.
I'd say go right into Yukon Health.
Okay. All right. Well, welcome Yukon Health and continued gratitude for the Yukon folks that are staying from one segment to the next. The floor is yours.
Excellent. Thank you, Senator. So we'll do the same format. I'll quickly go through. We have submitted all the answers and the details and all the graphs in our package. Be happy to take questions as we move along. And then also, when, when some of the answers are very similar, just the numbers change, I'll point that out and try not to spend a lot of time on just repeating the same information that could cross from the university over to Yukon Health. So very similar, the first question, just on Yukon Health history. So we do have provided a lot of detail in the historic years, and there is a attachment that has from fiscal '10 to fiscal '24. But underneath, though, we'll see that, you know, we just presented the fiscal '25 budget forecast, and then how we get to our fiscal year '26 projection. So, you know, with that similar, Yukon Health, though, 88% of Yukon Health's revenue comes from our patients, research and grant activity in our contracts and other revenues, including our tuition and education lines. And 12% currently is coming from the state. We'll see, just in the middle column, again, for the forecast for Yukon Health, though, if we go to the end, it's basically on budget. We are slightly unfavorable to our current run rate with the forecast. But that does include the reductions in state support that we have currently received. So even with those, we'll be able to, we believe we're going to be able to be close enough to balance our fiscal year '25 budget as we end in June. And then our projection, very, the same story again, as carried over from the university. The state support line on the first one, which is kind of the block grant, kind of rolls forward in the proposed governor's budget. But again, looking at the proposed governor's budget, the ARPA funds and some of the other carry forward funds, those are the items that are really removed and that make up the difference that we're looking for at this point. And just of note, the one item that we are requesting, that's part of it, is in the governor's proposed budget, he did not put the funds in for the John Dempsey Hospital fringe benefit differential. You'll see that's $4.3 million in the forecast for '25. So we would request the $4.5 million that is in that statute currently for funding for, for the hospital. But currently, if you just go to the bottom line, the Yukon Health is about $79 million short or an operating deficiency using the governor's proposed budget currently for fiscal year '26. Number two, basically the same, how is Yukon Health preparing for the loss of the one-time funds in ARPA funding? And very similar, but for in Yukon Health, we've been doing this for many years now. But really, there's a long-term strategic plan. It's focused on growth and increased clinical revenues, and also looking at some of our research activities as we have. But as we do that, you know, we're really looking at generating additional revenues that will, that will enable us to rely less on the state as a multi-year strategic plan and looking out a number of years as we continue to look at that. But we are not able to close that shortfall in the current fiscal year. It'll take a number of years to be able to close such a significant difference. And again, when we started from fiscal '25 to, for a total, again, total state support, we did reduce from '25 by $20.3 million in '26 and $34.1 million in fiscal '27. So again, as we're doing that planning, that is a focus that how can we reduce that each year as we continue to move forward? So, and I think we just mentioned, there's nothing that we have that would enable us to, you know, absorb the shortfall at 79.7 million in '26 and 87.6 million in fiscal '27. But we actually have an RFP that was issued. We are working with a consultant to do our next round. We call it our Financial Improvement Plan. But as we continue to focus on that, you know, Yukon Health has been meeting cost savings and revenue targets anywhere from 12 and a half to $15 million annually. And again, we're going to continue to do this over the years. But as you see, even if we do that again, these cost savings in one year won't be able to cover the total loss of that one-time funding. Next, number three. Does Yukon, and I believe Yukon Health, any indication of the impact of the federal, you know, directive around DEI initiatives, federal funding, impact changes on NIH grant funding and overhead? And how much funding is at stake? So basically, and as we continue to look at all of that, you know, I just say, I believe as the state as a whole, we're very concerned and, you know, as, as we look and see what the new uncertainty is coming with the federal government. So this includes any changes, and especially to NIH. That is the majority of the funding for, and we're over $130 million for Yukon Health. A majority of that at Yukon Health is related to the National Institutes of Health. So as we said, any change or reduction in NIH would significantly impact our research endeavors. And we are actually looking at that, but anything that would be, could be proposed currently would be millions of dollars over this year or next year alone. And you'll see at the bottom there, we just had the one impact could be a reduction in our indirect cost rates was calculated at 10.4 million. was calculated at $10.4 million in fiscal twenty five and up to $25 million in fiscal twenty six. So, you know, at this point in time, we are unclear of how this will affect or when this will be affect. We monitor the executive orders every, you know, every time when they come out. And we actually, you know, as as was stated before, we are currently, you know, in compliance with all existing federal laws. And we believe some of the executive orders are actually in direct conflict with that. So we'll continue to monitor that and, you know, review those laws with our legal support as things come out. But finally, with respect to research, you know, the leaders in our research, our Office Vice President for Research continues to analyze and monitor any order with the federal government. And we we are actually meeting on Monday to review that and do our best projection for developing our fiscal year projections for our research activity as we move forward. So a lot of uncertainty, it will be very difficult to budget, but we will continue to monitor that. And right now, our main concern is on our research activity, especially around NIH. The next one, again, is the same for the fund balance. So this is the same exact aspect as we went through for the university. Patrick, if you just go to the next page on the actual graph that we have there. Just for that, we can see again, the these are hundreds, if not thousands, of individual accounts for across Yukon Health that we actually have. And they are basically in the same operating capital and debt service buckets that we went over. So for Yukon Health, the operating bucket's about $70.6 million. And again, these are for faculty startups, cost of new labs, setting up and starting infrastructure to support new research and the overall replacement of research equipment and other activities for that. So again, these are for our current and future commitments that have already been made to some faculty for it. Just of note, and I didn't mention it last time, I unfortunately missed that. But the Board of Trustees does have a recommended guideline for the university and Yukon Health of ninety days worth of these operating dollars on hand to help support overall the university and the growth. So the university is about thirty days right now. And Yukon Health has about twenty days of operating dollars on hand, just for relative comparison. Then the next line is the capital dollars. So at Yukon Health, we have 152.6 million in the capital dollars. Same thing, a lot of these are for deferred maintenance. There's over $550 million of deferred maintenance plan that is in need right now for the university. And again, that's a multi-year ongoing aspect of every single year we will be chipping away and maintaining and trying to keep up the deferred maintenance plan. But also at Yukon Health, these funds are also committed for some clinical deferred maintenance projects and other items that are needed for patient safety or regulatory requirements when they come up. And again, when when patient safety or regulatory or anything comes up, they're they are addressed right away. We move forward and we complete those before anything else. So they do take the highest priority on the capital side when any of those items might come up. And then finally, just the debt service for Yukon Health is about $11.2 million. And again, just to maintain our credit rating overall on the loans and bonds related to Yukon Health. So next on question number five. What's the percent of state support in twenty six if the governor's proposed budget was would be adopted? So for Yukon Health, we're currently at twelve percent. So if the governor's proposed budget was adopted, it would actually be reduced to eight percent or five percentage points less than when we were currently now at twenty five. And the the graph on the below just shows, of course, the the main aspect of the Yukon Health revenue breakdown. Sixty one percent is related to our patient revenues. And then the other twenty seven percent is really our tuition academic side and a majority on our research spending. All our research revenue would be in the other revenues. So the next portion, and just to walk through, again, the same exact as the university, but for Yukon Health. The blue bar is on the left, just to do fiscal twenty six. We'll see that Yukon Health's request is $202.8 million. That's 177.9, which would be the roll forward of the block grant and just the funding. And 24.9 represents in that light blue section would be a representation of a three percent salary increase. And again, that's just in direct comparison to what the governor has proposed, which is $119.4 million, which is the green bar on the right. And then 3.7 in fiscal twenty six would be the three percent just on the permanent funds, which his proposal is $123.1 million. So we'll see right there that that's a seventy, $79.7 million shortfall or differential between the request and the governor's proposed budget. So next on question six. Could Yukon or Yukon Health provide some more information on the economic impact of the state? And we did and went through that again, the link in the university has a link to that total economic impact that we did for the total state. But as mentioned, Yukon Health separately, if you just spike them out, is about $3.6 billion overall in economic impact. And one of the major ones, again, contributes nearly 21,000 jobs directly from Yukon Health are indirect and are induced jobs that are part of the overall state economy. And of course, we are the single largest source of physicians, surgeons and dentists in the state. So again, the health center is here and the three main drivers for, you know, for Yukon Health is, you know, deliver the important services for the people of Connecticut, number one. Educate and train the next generation of healthcare professionals. This includes our physicians, our dentists, public health professionals and our graduate students. The second, we conduct that innovative research that actually does translational. So, you know, we'll just give a couple of examples that we have research into Lyme disease and our stroke care. And then finally, number three, of course, we provide the same world-class care to all Connecticut residents, regardless of the ability to pay. So of course, we we treat and care for our Medicaid patients, Medicare patients, and then all of the commercial patients, including anybody that self-pay, which is uninsured or underinsured. Moving on then to number seven. So Yukon Health has has patient revenue grown as a percent of overall revenue in the past five years? So we have listed that out actually in the chart and go just going back to twenty one. You can see in the second to the bottom, the growth and patient revenue services, which includes our pharmacy and all the revenues related to our patients was approximately 50.3%. If you go all the way to the end on our fiscal twenty six projections, you're going to see that with the current budget that is was presented, that would jump to 70.2%. So really, you know, one of the main drivers here, and we've had a similar conversation before. This was provided through the state's investment in Bioscience, Connecticut. So as the state invested that, that was really the catalyst that enabled us to actually increase our volumes overall. So, you know, and looking at patient volumes, we have, you know, last year had a record of 1.6 million outpatient visits. Our emergency department saw over 57,000 patients. And we have an increase since fiscal twenty one of 63%. And people might have remembered due to this demand and the increase, we actually had a CON out for an additional 23 beds for John Dempsey Hospital. And we're thrilled to report that just recently that was granted. And we have opened those beds and expanded our capacity in our hospital. So in line with that volume that we were seeing, the revenues have also just almost could have gone dollar for dollar increase in matching that. From twenty one to twenty four, net patient care revenue increased by 54%. It went from 600, 628.9 million dollars to 965.2 million dollars. And by the end of fiscal year twenty five, as we reported, we will be over a billion dollars of expected net patient revenue from our clinical activities. I'll take a quick break. I see Representative Dayton's hand up.
Oh, thank you. Just a quick question. When you are showing state support, you are including the past sort of pensions and other costs as part of that. I think if you don't mind, as part of any analysis, when they're so that we can see like for like, if you can do pro forma numbers. So you can show like, you know, state support and then the separate line item. You're laughing and smiling, but I I just like to see like for like, so I can really understand. Because I think of as a member of the public, if the public sees, oh, you know, in twenty four, the state only gave half to Yukon Health compared to what they did in the past. They, you know, it doesn't, they don't have that context. They don't have the the deep insight. And I know everybody in the public is going to be opening this up and investigating it. So I just want to make sure we're absolutely clear. So sorry to be a nerd here, but if you could do pro forma numbers, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So number one, the last page of the detail that we sent in, we break state support out by line. So you can see what the block grant is. I I do laugh because
I know it, but when you look at this chart and they may not get to the end because they're in such shock that the the state support is dropped by half, and that's not quite the case, and that's not the full picture. So just to be, you know, for the avoidance of doubt, when we are doing numbers that include things that have been stripped out due to policy changes, I think it'd be helpful to have pro forma numbers so everyone can see like for like.
Sure, we can definitely update those and make sure they're there. Plus, again, if there's questions on the detail in the back, we went back to fiscal ten, you'll see correctional managed healthcare and a lot of things that don't exist anymore. And we can always go through those details, too.
Perfect. Thank you.
Then moving on, the last question that we do have for Yukon Health is just a quick question. Can you talk about partnerships that we might pursue and how those partnerships will help the overall budget picture? I will, you know, basically put there, we always are continuing to explore any partnership as we move forward. So we are looking at public-private partnerships that will allow us to grow. And and the same thing, as we were talking about the SIM plan or the strategic enrollment management, there is an ongoing multi-year plan for the focus of growth for the clinical enterprise. And that does need to include these partnerships. So for one example, we just opened up a partnership with a freestanding radiology center where we, together with a private partner came and we do an off-site freestanding radiology center that actually provides lower-cost radiology, so MRIs, CAT scans, mammograms, all of that to the public as in addition to what our hospital actually runs. And we'll continue to look at those type of partnerships and move those forward. That is, you know, a very big part of the overall strategic plan and continuing the growth that we want to do overall on the clinical side. So when those come to fruition, we will update and bring those to the legislature also as those partnerships come to fruition and move forward. And with that, Madam Chair, my questions are done and we'd be happy to open it up to any other additional questions.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you for your presentation and your answer to all of our questions. And sorry about my camera, but there is no camera on this computer, apparently. I don't know. But I don't see any hands raised, so I'm just going to jump in and ask a question based on your last response and and question number eight there. Either with or without partnerships, do you see clinical growth continuing? Is there anything that's an impediment right now to you growing more?
So we do see growth continuing, so especially getting the 23 beds will enable the hospital to continue to grow and service those patients. The impediment, though, I I would say is bricks and mortar. As we are basically at capacity at a lot of our clinics, that's where those partnerships come into. So instead of, you know, you know, the funding and the investment in those partnerships, and that's basically the part of the capital line that we do see in the in the fund balance report will enable us to invest in those bricks and mortar. But we do a detailed analysis to ensure that anything we do has a return on investment that'll continue and add to that bottom line of the clinical enterprise. And the goal, you know, overall is to ensure on the clinical side, the state support will still be needed for the schools, research and other things like that. But we want to ensure the goal for the clinical side is there are no state dollars going to the clinical activity. And that's our goal as we continue to do these partnerships and move forward.
Great, thank you. And then somewhat related to that, I've seen the growth of your expanded clinical footprint. But for years, I have said that, you know, I have constituents that live an hour and a half from Farmington. And the only place they can get certain kinds of care is at your facilities in Farmington. And many of those folks are forced to go there because you're the only ones who'll take their coverage. And it's often Medicaid coverage, Medicaid patients who can't get seen by a provider anywhere else for some specialties. And so you, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but as an organization, you all must be waiting with bated breath for changes that may be coming down the pike for Medicaid and what federally? And what would that mean to you? What would that mean to the patients that you serve and and all of the our constituents who rely on you as the only place that many of them can get healthcare?
Yeah, so I think number one, yeah, Medicaid or any change that's going to come through related to Medicaid, Medicare or any of the programs in including our 340B on the pharmacy side will have a huge impact to basically the bottom line, depending on what they do. We we, at this point in time, as you as you said, Senator, we see patients from Medicaid patients from every 169 cities and towns in the state. They drive by other very, you know, very good hospitals to come to Farmington to get that care because of A, either access or, you know, availability to actually get them in. Our mission is solely driven around that access and providing that care. The differential, though, if something dramatic does come out of Washington, I, you know, the, we can't change that mission. We will still be focused on that. We will have to focus, though, overall on what that effect to us would be and or the state. So we work closely with DSS. We do get a certain match dollars. So on the physician's side, we have a federal match program and a spa that goes through DSS where those dollars are there. And then on the hospital side, of course, the hospital gets some funds and the state actually gets some funds related to those dollars also. And how that relates could also have a dramatic impact on, you know, on our budgets as we continue to move forward. So the only thing I can tell you is we're constantly doing that. We work with our partners at the Connecticut Hospital Association, our partners on the federal side as we continue to monitor it. But we just have to be ready to react and then work with our state partners on Office of Healthcare Access, DSS and others to see what those changes might affect our budget. But yes, that's a that's a major concern.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Okay. Anything else you wanted to share that we missed? Oh, you know, I did have one more question. Slide that you had up with the with the bar chart for the percentages of where your revenue comes from. You did not have the budget that we're looking at in terms of percentages, but you said it was eight percent in the first year. And what was the percentage in the second year?
Right. Lisa, do you know what fiscal twenty seven would be?
I I believe it was going to be eight percent also. I'd have to look to verify that. I can get that. I noticed our bar chart's missing FY twenty six, so I can update that, too. I apologize.
Well, no, that just the visual is very powerful.
Yeah, we can update.
The proposals are.
We'll we'll update both the university and Yukon Health with twenty six and twenty seven, so they're both there.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right. Well, I don't see any other questions. Don't see any hands up. don't see any hands up. All right. Well, thank you all very much. Um, Madam Clerk, I think that's our last piece of the schedule for today, correct?
Yes, this is the last, uh, part of the schedule.
Okay, great. Well, thank you all very much. Have a nice weekend.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Thank you. Bye.